Nice background CJ.
I know, I wish I was there.
Actually, I like the painting that's behind Tara.
Oh, my leaves.
I like it.
Thank you.
Does Andrew look like Rick Astley, the way he's moving all over there?
Yeah, the graphic.
He's got the green screen thing on.
I'm still in here.
He's not in here, he left.
No, he's here. He's there, it's his gray sweatshirt there.
I tried to send a message, but he's not in his meeting.
Okay, now you can hear me and I can hear you.
Yeah, but can you turn, can you stop the recording and then re-record it so all the...
Okay, welcome everybody, sorry for the slight delay here, welcome everybody to the April 23rd, 2020 Village Board meeting, we're doing this via Zoom. If we can all rise for the pledge of allegiance, I have the flag behind me, everybody can probably see it, in a moment of silence. I pledge allegiance to the flag. The United States of America. And to the Republic. One nation.
Invisible.
With liberty and justice. Okay, thank you everybody. All right, so first on the agenda this evening is a public hearing for introductory local law number two, zoning zone change procedures, Desiree, can you please read the public hearing notice?
I can, I just want to remind everybody that they should be muted if they're not a village board member or a consultant, so that there's no feedback or background or echoing like we've had in the past, thank you.
I just muted everybody that should be muted.
Okay, just wanted to put that out there so we don't have that crinkling noise like last time. Okay, a public hearing is being held, entertain public comments on introductory local law two of 2020 entitled Zone Change Amendment Procedures, which will amend Chapter 310, zoning of the Village Code to clarify and modify the procedures for amendments to the zoning code and the zoning map. The public notice was printed in the Times held record on April 13th, 2020. Oh, I should note for the record that on April 20th, I received a response from the county from the GML 239 review, and it states that the Department of Planning has found no evidence that significant intermissible or countywide impacts would result from approving this law, and they added that they have no further advisory comments, also, we did not receive any comments from the planning board.
Okay, thank you, before we go to public comment, Kelly, could you just give us a brief background on what we're talking about here?
Sure, so introductory local law number two changes Section 31052 of your code, your code in that section is the procedure for amendments to the zoning code. What's in there now doesn't really set forth as clear of a procedure as was wanted by the board, so the procedure that's proposed is that the zoning chapter can be amended, supplemented or repealed from time to time by the village board on its own motion as provided herein. Also, the planning board and the zoning board, they're permitted to recommend to the village board any proposed modifications, so it's really something that has to come from a municipal board to be entertained. You refer it to the planning board as usual, this sets forth the public hearing requirements, the local law sets forth the required notifications for adjacent municipalities, for planning department, things like that, but really makes the process clearer than what is in place now.
Okay, thanks Kelly. What I'm gonna do for the four members of the public that I see joined to this conference is I will unmute you one at a time, if you have a comment, please make that comment at the time and I'll just call your name, so I'm just gonna go in the order that I see the screen, so Mistress Pulver, do you have anything you'd like to ask or say? You're unmuted.
Can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay, yes, I'm just wondering if I will still be able to solicit a zone change to achieve what I'm trying to do in the ballroom of my property up there, that I've been trying to do for a long time, I didn't know exactly if this was eliminating my right to appeal or just setting a different process in...
Well, I think personally it's setting a different process, but I'd like Kelly to elaborate on that if you could.
Yes, absolutely, so previously you would have petitions that were required if a private property owner wanted a zone change, and it had to be a certain percentage of individuals within that zone, and it was unclear if it was within the entire zone or within the zone in the area that they were, so if somebody wants a zone change, they certainly can write a letter to the village board, but it's up to the village board if they want to entertain that zone change, and that would be on their own motion in their own direction, so, but there is no petition process anymore.
Okay, okay, I was just wondering if I, if the right to petition was being eliminated, as long as I have some access to do that, then I, I'm happy with that, I'm fine.
Well, I understand it Seth, is that while you can't make an application based on the changes to the law, you'd still be able to ask us to bring forth a change to a particular, would that be correct Kelly?
That's absolutely correct.
Okay, I appreciate.
Any other comments Seth?
No, I appreciate the clarification, thank you.
Okay, you're gonna go back on mute, Mistress Lotta, you are now unmuted, do you have a comment?
I have nothing Seth.
Okay, thank you. Sandy, you are now, wait.
Jesus is here.
Sandy, you are now, not, you are not unmuted, if you have a comment, unmute yourself and please go ahead, hey Jesus, good to see you.
Noting for the record that trustee Jesus has joined the committee meeting. I have nothing.
Okay, thank you Sandy. Mister Conway, you can go ahead and unmute yourself if you have a comment. And it appears Mister Conway does not have a comment, okay. I have a que, well, I do have a question for council. Currently in the zone code, in the code, there is a mechanism for which to get money for escrow, in the event that somebody applies for a zone change, that seems as if that's being pulled out of there if we pass it in its current form, A, is that the case, and if so, who would pay for consultants from the villagers' perspective, would it be on us to then pay for consultants, or how would that work?
Well, it would be on you for part of it, depending on how the zone change comes about, so if it's just, the board decides on a zone change, obviously you'd be paying your own consultants for that, however, the part of the code that addresses that, and I'm trying to pull it up now, all, the only portion of that that's being removed is the reference to a petition, so that petition process is gone, I'm unable to pull it up right now, but I believe that it says upon an application of somebody, so if somebody's applying to have a zone change and this board determines to undertake that zone change, you would work with that applicant, for that applicant to pay for those consulting costs.
So we'd still have a venue from which, with which to get escrow money to be able to pay for the consultants?
Yes, if it's, if it's a private person asking for that, and we'll find that and interrupt when I do.
Okay, because there's still circumstances under which zone changes would be requested based on our current code, like TOD or... Desiree, you're raising your hand.
I didn't want to interrupt, I just wanted to read the section Kelly was referring to, it's Section 3 of the proposed introductory local law that's before you this evening, and it's amending Section 65-3 where it says hereby amended to remove quote, "or petition for any zone change," end quote, in the first sentence, which is under the taxpayer protection law.
Thank you, that is it.
Great, great, thank you, and thanks Des for finding that, because there are sections within our code like TOD or the recently applied for senior housing and, and, what's the third one, hotel overlay, Des and I were talking about this the other day, hotel overlay that applications can come before the village to the planning board, for example, that would require types of changes like this, so I want to make sure that there's some way in which the applicants to whatever board would be paying for that, and not us, or not the taxpayer through us, so.
Yeah, so the rest of that section that Desiree referenced, thank you Desiree, it says that any and all such specific and non-general costs or expenses incurred by the village in reviewing any application, special permit, license, franchise agreement, site plan, subdivision variance, and amendments to any approved map or tax map or text of the village code, as well as any other submissions to the village board of trustees, ZBA, planning board, blah, 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 so it includes those other, any other submissions to the village board and application, it's just removing the reference to the petition procedure, because your petition procedure that's in there right now really needs to be clarified, and that was the whole purpose for this local law.
Good, I don't know if anybody else had questions similar to mine, I just wanted to make sure we get that, you know, out in the public on the record, does any of the other board members, and this isn't regular or normal, but does any other board member have a question for council before we move on with any motions with regard to this? Andrew's shaking his head, no, Chris, no, Tara, no, Jesus? Okay, all right, so we have a few options here, we can either close the public hearing, we can continue the public hearing to a May meeting, May 14th meeting, or we could close the public hearing and accept public comments to a certain period, I think we should do one of the last two personally, but I'll, I'll ask for a motion from somebody to either do one of, to do one of those three things, so preferably in my opinion, either continue the public hearing to May 14th, or just to close the public hearing and then seek or allow written comment to a certain period, for example, May 8th. Guys have a preference or any suggestions or thoughts?
I would close public and leave the written open.
Okay, is that a motion?
I'll second that.
Okay, so Tara made the motion to close the public hearing and accept written comment until May 8th, Andrew seconded that motion, any further discussion on that? Okay, all in favor? Aye, anyone opposed? Okay, okay, so that's what we'll do then, the public hearing is now closed on that, we will accept comment until, written comment, that is until May 8th, at which time we'll take further action. Okay. So that's the only public hearing we have this evening, let's move on to administrative business, can you get a motion in a second to accept the minutes of the meeting held on April 9th, please?
I'll make that motion.
I'll second it.
Okay Tara. Any discussion?
I'm sorry, I couldn't, because some of you sound alike in this mode, can you just say like Tara motion, Andrew second?
Tara made the motion and Andrew seconded it again.
Okay, thank you.
So any discussion on accepting of the minutes? All in favor?
Aye.
Hey Jesus, you said aye, right?
Aye.
Thank you.
Mayor Egan, if you'd like, after the motions are made, I can poll the board so that there's a clear indication of everyone who, how they vote.
Probably not the worst idea in the world, because it's, we're talking over each other, okay, great.
Kelly, you're not dark anymore.
Hi Kelly.
Saw a hand waving Kelly, was that's an indication of, you have something to say or?
I was just turning on the light.
Okay.
Sorry.
No, no problem, I just, I was looking on this side and I saw a hand waving, okay, so next up is approval of the abstract, Des, can you please read the abstract?
Yes, this is abstract 22, it contains vouchers 191826 through 191897, in a total of $220,997.86.
Okay, can I get a motion in a second to approve the abstract, please?
I'll make that motion.
That was Jesus. That was Chris. Any discussion? Okay, Des, you just want to do a roll call so we can?
Sure, Mayor Egan?
Aye.
Trustee Burke?
Aye.
Trustee Jacamaza?
Aye.
Trustee Gomez?
Aye.
Trustee Graziano? Thank you.
Motion passes, next up is fire department equipment requisitions, now we have four, as you guys are sure have noticed, four equipment requisitions from the fire department, two were tabled from the March 26 meeting, and two are new for this evening, I did speak to the fire chief again, and while we had tabled it to this meeting in particular from the March 26 meeting, he did not have any intention of seeking approval for those two requests that we had tabled from then, so we're gonna table those first two motions indefinitely, and that was for the light packages, so that was A and B, and we're, I'd like to proceed with motions, excuse me, items C and D, 2020-11 and 2020-12, the first being $2,344 for the purchase of a uniform shirts, and the second, 2020-12 totaling $519.98 for two dash cameras for fire apparatus, ones for a fire chief's vehicle, ones for, I believe, the engine. So can I get a motion and a second for that?
I'll make that motion.
Okay, Andrew?
I'll second.
Tara seconded it, any discussion or question?
I'd like to ask a question.
Yes ma'am.
I just want to make sure I understand, so the department shirts, they're okay with purchasing, but scene lighting, they said we can table?
Correct. Yeah, well, they need uniform stuff, they already have lights on those existing trucks, these are lighting upgrades, and it's for a significant amount of money, and I talked to Chief McLennan prior, a couple hours ago, and he was fine with it, so the total of those two items was $2,863.98, just so we're all on the same page, did that answer your question Des?
Wanted to make sure we had it clarified.
Okay, very good, so we had a motion in a second, any discussion, no, all in favor?
Just one, one question.
Oh, hang on, before we go on that, who had the question?
I did, and the first, the 57 of whatever we're ordering doesn't have a size, do they know that?
Say that again, please?
If whatever the 57 they're ordering doesn't have a size.
Oh yeah, they're gonna get the assorted sizes, you're talking about the shirts, right?
Yeah, 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 okay, I was just trying to make sure, I didn't forget it before we voted on.
Yeah, they're gonna, they're gonna get the appropriate sizes, they do this often and they know what, how many of what size they need. Okay, I'm sorry, I lost track, did we vote?
You had a motion in a second, we gotta do it, all in favor.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
All right, thank you.
All raised your hands, that was great, perfect, thank you.
All right, very good, so next on the agenda is appointment of full-time assistant building inspector effective June 1st, 2020, so I'd like to do a motion in a second, and then have any discussion on this before we vote, so can I vote?
Just want to amend it that it's gonna be June 8th, not June 1st.
Okay, thank you, very good, so what I'm asking for is a motion and a second to appoint Alex Presti to the position of full-time assistant building inspector effective June 8th at a rate of $27.55 an hour.
On the question.
Andrew, but hang on.
Let me, let me just, I, we, you and I had an earlier conversation.
We did, if I, if I may, can I just interrupt you if I have a second?
Yes, go ahead.
The, the, I'd like to just do the motion in a second, then do the discussion, and we can vote it up or down, however the board wants to vote.
Okay, all right, I'll make that motion.
Okay.
I'll second.
Okay, so Andrew made the motion, Jesus seconded the motion, now, there is discussion, Andrew, please go ahead.
Okay, so with the current economic state, and the fact that our building, building in Woodbury is particularly, is just shut down, I had suggested earlier maybe holding off on this hire until things sort of open back up, financially, I think it's in the best interest of Woodbury, and at the same time, I really don't know, you know, right now, there's nothing, there's nothing going on building wise, so I just felt it was probably in our best interest to wait on the hire and move forward at a later date, once everything gets going, because I think once it even opens up, it's still gonna take some time, planning board, zoning board, everything to move forward a bit more, so I think it was really more responsible just to hold off on the hire itself, so.
Yep, that's pretty much the part and parcel of the conversation you and I had.
I agree, at least till after the governor has said that you can open up again, so until we get a clearance from the governor to go on, and then we can set a date after.
So let me just let you guys make aware of the process, because you may not be aware of how it works with civil service, we've already got an extension on the list that we called for, because originally this was supposed to be done a couple of weeks ago, they don't grant two extensions, we already have the one extension, so the process has already been followed, if we do not take action tonight, then we have to scrap everything that was done, and call for a new list at a later date, and that could change the availability of the person that was selected, to not be reachable or not be available, he may have taken another position, whatnot, so, and speaking to Gary about this, his thought process was, this is the perfect time to get somebody on staff, because the training would be so much easier, since it is a little bit slower for them, it wouldn't be as hectic of a training, trying to train them while also doing all the work of the job that's involved, that's just the input from people who are, you know, gonna be doing all the work.
So is this a tested position?
It is a tested position, yes, he scored, I have that here, if you want me to pull it out for you. He scored a 90, there were three 90s, and he scored, and he scored one of the 90s.
I'm just asking, will we have to conduct a new, to be a new test conducted if we...
No, we'd have to call for the list again, we'd have to redo all the interviews, and we'd have to redo the entire process, which there's expense to that, because we have to, you know, pay for the postage mail, the injured letters, and then whatnot.
Is he in the top three?
He isn't, he's on the number one.
All right, so what's that?
It is if somebody else hires him.
Yeah. Be a hiring with later on, the start date after training.
Well, that's why we're doing it June 8th and not sooner, because originally the plan was for him to start prior to the, oh, sometime this month actually, but we got an extension on the current list because of the circumstances of, that we were having difficulty conducting interviews, and that's where we're at now, so like I said, Gary, you know, feels that this is the perfect time, because he can actually sit down with the gentleman and train him without a lot of interruption, because he's still out doing inspections and things like that, they're still bringing in money, I just deposited, I think it was $5,000 yesterday, so they are still bringing in money, they are still doing work, they're still getting applications, people want to put fences in, because they're home, and Home Depot and Lowe's is open, not that that's an ad, so there is still work going on, but, you know, it is entirely up to you, the, I did do an analysis of the budget, and I have been working with our financial advisor and the comptroller, and I, as far as this line item goes, I don't know that it would be an issue, but again, it is, you know, your purview to decide what to do or not to do, I would just need to know, because we've already got plans in place based on this.
June 8th, the last day of hire for this extension.
Um, no, that's the date that Gary is requesting, because originally it was gonna be June 1st, and he requested it that it be June 8th, the actual list expired on April 2nd, I got an extension that would extend me till middle of May, so if you don't want to make a decision tonight, if you want to wait till the next meeting, I think you can, I don't know what type of commitment Gary may or may not have given to this individual, as far as whatever employment he currently has.
But if the board wanted to vote and say, yes, we want to hire this person, but start on July 1st, we can do that. That's what I'm saying.
I don't see why you, why you can't.
But wouldn't that, you would have, that would be the stipulation that he would accept that?
That would be, yeah.
Just asking a question.
Running the risk that he might say no, and then we're going back to square one.
Correct, and again, you know, not to harp on it, but being someone who has to train someone in a busy office, this really is the ideal time, because it's not as easy as just going out and, you know, saying, oh yeah, that looks good, there's involvement.
Well, my thought is we definitely need more code enforcement out there.
Yeah, he's also still short fire marshal, so this is not, you know, his staff, his, his department, although slow now, it will come back eventually, we have the Aon application that's coming in, and whatever applications that are still behind, aside for the planning board that possibly, like the larger ones are probably not gonna go away, the smaller ones may, who knows, and there's probably some that are waiting for the doors to open.
I'm actually choosing to see this as an opportunity, agreeing with trustee Graziano, that it's an opportunity to improve revenue and improve the uniformity and stability of code enforcement, and just get on a better firm standing with regard to that, we, there's something we've talked about in small conversations in the past, so I would like to see that happen, I agree with that. Any, any other comments? Andrew, Jesus? Okay, so Des, wanna call a roll?
Motion by trustee Graziano, I'm sorry, trustee Jacamaza, sorry, and a second by trustee Gomez, Mayor Egan?
How about I?
Trustee Burke?
Aye.
Trustee Jacamaza?
No.
Trustee Gomez? I'm sorry?
Aye.
Thank you, and trustee Graziano?
Aye.
Okay, motion carries for one, okay, so, new business, oh, excuse me, old business, we have no old business, new business, first item in new business is a discussion on introductory local law number five, net lot area, so first thing we'll do is introduce it, then we can refer to the planning board, and then we can have a little discussion on it, so, can I have a motion in a second to introduce introductory local law number five of 2020, which will amend Chapter 310 zoning of the code of the village of Woodbury, amending the definition of lot area?
I'll make that motion.
I'll second.
So it was trustee Graziano made the motion, trustee Burke seconded the motion, any discussion? Des roll?
Mayor Egan?
Aye.
Burke?
Aye.
Trustee Jacamaza?
Aye.
Trustee Gomez?
Aye.
And trustee Graziano?
Aye.
Okay, motion passes, so now I'm asking for a motion in a second to refer introductory local law number five of 2020 to the village planning board for comment.
I'll make that motion.
A second.
Trustee Jacamaza made the motion, trustee Gomez seconded the motion, any discussion? Okay, Des?
Mayor Egan?
Aye.
Trustee Burke?
Aye.
Trustee Jacamaza?
Aye.
Trustee Gomez?
Aye.
And trustee Graziano?
Aye.
Before you move forward, I just want to make sure I got something correct on the building inspector, is that gonna be June 8th, or are we saying July 1st, I just, I don't know, went back and forth, I don't want to have the wrong date in the minutes.
My understanding was June 8th.
Okay, yes.
Everyone's on it, yeah, okay.
Okay, thank you.
Okay. So now that we've introduced it, and now that we've referred to the planning board, Kelly, can you give us an overview on what we're talking about here?
Yes, so, some of you may have looked at it and been slightly confused, because it looks like what the current code book says, and that's accurate, so back in 2016, I'm not sure if you recall, but the board had adopted a, two local laws, the first had revised the definition of hotel, and the second was this one, and revised the definition of net lot area, there was litigation, they were declared null and void by the court, it was primarily centered around the hotel definition, but the code company never changed that in your code to go back to reflect the court's decision, so it needs to be made law, and basically, it's so that it incorporates deducting things like wetlands and steep slopes, things like that, out of the net lot area for both residential and non-residential properties, that's the purpose of this local law, but I didn't want there to be confusion, and I'm, I'm sure that there was, just because it looks like what you have, but what you have electronically is not what you actually has, have, so this clears up the books, if you will.
Thank you Kelly, okay, so what I'd like to do, if everyone agrees, is have a discussion about this, give the opportunity to ask questions of counsel, and then we can schedule it for public hearing at a later meeting.
Kelly, how many days is a planning? Kelly, how many days does a planning board have to have for comment?
Forty-five, no?
There is not a, a time limit in your code. But for the last local law, we gave them, it was referred on March thirteenth. So I'll have it referred by Monday. I'll send it to the planning board and the planning department for the referrals. The public hearing needs, it just, under your code, it just needs to be referred to the planning board prior to your public hearing. But it needs to be advertised 10 days prior. So I would think it would probably be for your second meeting in May would be a good date.
Okay. All right, so we can keep that in mind. We don't need to do SEACRA and everything now, right?
Sorry, I keep muting myself and unmuting myself. You don't have to do SEACRA now. I did provide the board with parts one, two, and three of a full environmental assessment form. You are the only involved agency, so if you did want to take action just to start that process, you could assume lead agency and type this as an unlisted action. Then you could review those documents further. If you have any additional questions, we can talk about it at your next meeting.
I would like to, just to get it out of the way. Chris was nodding his head in the greens. So, okay, so then I'd like a motion in a second to declare the village of Woodbury Board of Trustees as lead agency.
I'll make that motion.
I'll second.
That was trustee Jacamoza, trustee Burick with the first and the second. Any discussion? All in favor?
Hi.
Guys, you good with that one?
Yeah, I believe everyone said hi and raised their hand, so that was good.
All right, very good. So now I need a motion in a second to declare, oh, this is an unlisted action under SEACRA.
I'll make that motion.
Trustee Graziano and then trustee Gomez with the second. Any discussion? All in favor?
Hi.
Hi. Good, does? Okay. All right, very good. So who has questions for Kelly? Andrew says no. Tara says no. Chris says no. Jesus says yes. You have a question, Jesus? Okay, and I have no further questions after that explanation by Kelly, so I'm good. So then let's go ahead and we'll put that on the agenda for the second meeting in May. That's what I heard earlier. And
Twenty-eighth.
Yeah, so we'll schedule the public hearing.
May twenty-eighth.
Yeah.
May twenty-eighth, yes.
Okay.
Motion in a second.
Uh, yes, can I have a motion in a second to schedule a public hearing for this on May twenty-eighth?
I'll make that motion. And I'll second it.
Okay.
Because she's a lady and she comes first.
Trustee Burick and trustee Jacamoza, any discussion? All in favor? Hi. All right, very good. Moving on. So discussion on land preservation is next on the agenda. So this is something that many of us have talked about with each other and with the public over the past year or so. Trustee Burick, this, I think, was in your wheelhouse and your initiative, so why don't you lead us off?
Yeah, um, so I've been reading because I, I need a hobby since I'm home and the tax deadline's been extended, so I read a lot. I read through the Blooming Grove Plan and the Warwick Plan. And for those people who don't, aren't familiar with what this is, it's something called a community preservation plan, which I've spoken about ad nauseam at meetings, where the board would create a, you know, a comprehensive type plan for identifying properties to preserve for forever green space or wetland, to preserve aquifers, any type of recreational areas. So basically you're saying that they're going to be designated parcels that are going to have designated uses. And so there's a couple of parts to it in order to establish. But basically it's, you're saying, you know, you're not ever going to be able to build as long as the village owns the property. So there is quite a bit of planning that goes into this document preparations and discussions. And it takes some boards in excess of two years to come up with the plan and to actually see it through. Because first you have the plan, then you have to create the community preservation fund in order to fund the plan. And that's got to go through legislative approval with the state because it is a tax on real estate sales. So it's, it's quite a process, but I think it's imperative that it starts now and that we at least go through the motions of, of exploring it and seeing what the possibilities are, identifying the properties that could potentially be subject to the plan and, and then move forward from there. I know Blooming Grove has, similar to the comprehensive plan exploratory committee that we're looking to set up, they have a community preservation plan committee and it's five appointed residents. Many of them have served in some capacity on a zoning or a planning board capacity, you know, being that they have the experience. And I would think that would be something we would look to do as well, to give the, us, you know, the board guidance and what they want to see.
I too read through both Blooming Grove's plan and the town of Warwick's plan as well as Cornwall's plan. And I agree with you. I think Warwick and Blooming Grove's plans, especially Blooming Grove's, actually both of them really have different strengths. But they both seem to outline and capture what the essence of what it is that you were talking about and what it is that I think personally we should do. The concern I have is paying consultants for this. I don't think we have money budgeted for this with regard to consultants. And I'm not sure that we can do this without consultants. And again, I'm looking at Desiree, well, actually Desiree and Kelly. I don't know how that would happen, but obviously we need to take the first steps regardless of how we're paying for it and when we're paying for it. So I agree with you. So my, my first question then for you, Tara, would be, would you like to see us create a committee similar to what we're doing with regard to the comprehensive plan?
I think it's a start. And then from there, we can figure out what we need and see it through from there.
Okay.
Go about figuring out the depths of this until you have people putting in the work.
Right.
It's a lot of, tremendous amount of work.
As evidenced by the length of these documents.
It, it's really, it's, if you are an insomniac, it might be a cure. But it's, but I actually enjoyed it because you get, you definitely get, as you said, the different fields with the different areas. And, you know, Warwick is very farm-driven, which was the inspiration for their plan, which I found interesting. You could tell I'm a city girl because farmland interests me. So yeah, I think that would be a first, a first step.
Okay, so, so what I'm hearing is we, we'd like to form a committee to start looking at this and then figuring out. And, and that's free. It doesn't cost us anything to have volunteers. Until we need to seek counsel, whether it be from counsel or from a planner. Kelly, can you give us some guidance with regard to how this might work with regard to the formation of the committee?
Sure. So it would be formed basically just how you did your last comprehensive plan committee. I think as Tara was saying, it makes sense to have people with a planning and zoning background. But again, you're going to find that people that may not have served on those boards may really have an interest in this type of thing. So putting, you know, an application out on the website or a public notice may attract some more attention. And then you can take a look at those people, put together a committee and really just get the ball rolling. I think that's the, the first step is get people together, see what their interests are, make sure they're in line with, with, you know, what you're looking for and start the process rolling. It can, it is time intensive and it's a lot of work. But when you get people who are really interested in it, it really makes a difference.
Should the comprehensive plan committee that we've already formed tackle this in addition to what they're doing or should it be completely separate?
I think it can be, it can be, I think it would be better if it was separated. I mean, you can have some individuals that are on the comprehensive committees sit on this committee, but really their focuses are different. One is looking for land preservation and open space and recreation. And the other is looking at the entire community and how growth should be distributed and developed.
I agree with you. I was hoping honestly you would say that. I'm just a little concerned about where these people are going to come from. But that's a problem for, you know, next month. I have one more question.
If you have a lot of people, that's a, that's a good problem to have.
That'd be a terrific problem to have. I have one more question and then I'll, you know, of course, turn it over to everybody else. Makeup of the, of this committee. Now, the Blooming Grove Plan that Tara referenced was pretty specific with regard to five people from the community with experience in planning and or zoning. What about, and we had the same, I had the same questions with the previous committee that we started. Village board members, planning board members, ZBA members, anybody like that? Recommendations for, again?
I would recommend that no board members from this board be on the board, but again, be a liaison. Designate somebody as a liaison. It would be great to have a member of the planning board and a member of the zoning board on it. But you may not, I mean, there's, both boards have a lot of work. You may not be able to get that. But that would be my recommendation. As far as numbers, it's really up to you, however many people you want on it. And if you get more applications and you think there's more people, you can always increase the number on the committee at a later date.
Again, a good problem to have if we happen to cross that bridge. Why don't we go in order? Trustee Graziano, what comments or questions do you have?
Yeah, two things. One, I agree a hundred percent that this is something we need to do. Not every, you know, something we, we talked about, you know, going through the whole fall before we actually became on the board is not every single piece of land that you have in, in, in the municipality needs to be developed. It just because it's there, it's vacant and sitting there, doesn't mean we need to throw something away. That's not really what, you know, you need to keep some sort of, you know, balance between what you develop and what you leave as open space. So this is something part we maybe need to do for that. And I also think this is another good chance to bring the community and our citizens into helping govern their future. And that's something that's really critical, I think, for everybody to get involved with and work together to, to, you know, kind of get the vision of what Woodbury's going to look like in 2030. And this is a big piece of that as well. So I think the two committees can work and complement each other. And I think this is, is a really good thing moving forward.
Agreed. Very good. Anything else? Trustee Graziano, or excuse me, Jacamoza?
Too many G's.
Yeah.
You're, you're muted, Andrew.
Hold on, here we go.
On purpose, he's muted on purpose.
Do it, my hands are up.
Um, so first off, I want to thank trustee Burick for introducing this because I think conserving land is probably the biggest issue that I think we all address during our own respective campaigns. And the one thing with knocking on doors, I think, is that you hear this over and over again. So I am all in favor of moving forward with this. I like the idea of involving the public with this. I think we have plenty of former zoning and planning board members that would be, and even former trustees, that would be excellent additions to this particular committee. And I'm really looking forward to moving forward with this, so let's get it on.
Okay, trustee Gomez?
I'm also in agreement with, also, if the guy that's doing the grants, looking for the grants, wasn't one of them referencing to?
Yeah, absolutely.
Yeah, there's definitely some history there with, I was actually going to mention that later, but there's definitely some history with our grant writers with regard to helping municipalities purchase land. I, I think maybe even for this exact purpose. So keep in mind, it's never a hundred percent, but certainly a good start. So that's definitely one of the things I'm interested in having them look at.
Well, because you said we didn't have money budgeted, but maybe if we could get this grant, we can get it moving along already.
Start the process, yeah. I like it.
I'm absolutely agreeing. Thank you, Tara.
Before we move on with any motions, trustee Burick, do you have anything to add?
No, just that, you know, I know a lot of people hear the word tax and it's got a negative connotation around it, but understand that it's a tax on the buyer of any, any real estate residential. I don't know if it applies to commercial as well. And so it's not something that, you know, the current residents that are staying in Woodbury are going to have to absorb. And that's a very important piece because everybody gets very scared when you mention new taxes.
It's a sore point for, well, everybody.
No, especially in this climate.
Okay, so.
Can I ask a question?
Yeah, of course.
Um, so what if the plan that you want to buy, the person doesn't want to sell you? Is that?
You can't, it has to be in agreement with the buyer. It's not that you just take it from them and, no, no, it's not, it's not that type of, be a sort of compromise.
So even if it's designated or, or labeled as possible forever green, it doesn't necessarily mean it will happen because the seller, the owner may not want to do that?
From what I understand, yes. And I believe the parcels you identify have to be reasonably attainable. It's not that, you know, it's a property that's not for sale, never will be for sale, you know, I don't think that those apply.
No pie in the sky type stuff, yeah.
Yeah, right.
I got it.
You can have a wish list. I just thought they could be in the plan.
All right, so just to recap then, so what I, what I've heard then is five members from the community, one member each from planning and ZBA, just like we did with the comprehensive plan committee, a liaison from the village board, which obviously would be Tara. Yeah, of course, there was no question and I don't think in anybody's mind.
Hi.
So can I have a motion to that effect?
I'll make that motion.
So that was trustee Jacamoza that made the motion to have a preservation committee for, that includes seven people from the community, one each from the planning board, zoning board of appeals, with trustee Burick as the liaison from the village board.
Just to clarify, your attorney did state that it's quite possible you may not get someone from the planning and zoning board because of their heavy workload, one, and two, already being on the comp plan committee possibly as well.
So is that optional instead of mandatory?
That's what I'm at, that's what I want to see, if that's what you want to do.
I have no problem with that person.
I think it should be optional.
Chris had a thumbs up. Yeah, okay, we're good. So Andrew, would you like to amend the motion to include the comments just now?
Tara, would you like to make the motion? It's your, it's your baby.
I'll make the motion.
There you go.
So Andrew, Tara presented the motion that we just stated, correct?
Yes.
So who would like to make the motion?
I'll second it.
Okay, so trustee Burick made the motion, trustee Gomez seconded the motion. Any further discussion? Okay, so does?
Oh, I like the little thumbs up.
I've got a roll call.
Yeah, but I think trustee, trustee Graziano needs to give us all a four-one-one on how to do Zoom here, right? Mayor Egan?
Hi.
Trustee Burke?
Hi.
Trustee Jacamoza?
Oh, that was good.
I, I will get it like on his last day.
At the bottom of the screen is reactions. You see the bottom?
Hang on a second. What makes?
Oh, I do.
What makes you think you're going to be here on his last?
You gave yourself a clap.
That's true. Trustee, well, he is my favorite trustee, in case you didn't hear.
I had to get rid of it.
Trustee Gomez? Trustee Graziano?
Hi.
Unanimous, okay. All right, great. That was a good discussion.
Okay, do you wait, do you want to set a deadline for letters of interest? Or do we want to wait till the current planning board, zoning board, and current comp plan letter of interest term expires? Or what do you want to do?
That depends on how urgently we want to do this. I mean, we do have a lot of things out there right now with regard to requests for letters of interest. So I see your point. Tara, it's, you know.
When does the comp plan remind me of the date?
That was May?
May, yeah, the, the planning and zoning board is tomorrow. May eighth is the comp plan.
It should be after, then, because I think it's too much.
So why don't I prepare the advertisement to be
Put in a paper.
Virtually blast on the eleventh of May and have responses due back by June fifth? Okay, that work for you?
Reasonable.
Love them.
Okay, everyone's in agreement on that.
Get a motion.
I'll make that motion.
Thank you.
I'll second.
So trustee Gomez and trustee Graziano with the first and the second. Any discussion? All in favor?
Hi.
How about I? Okay. All right, so that concludes new business. We'll go to board member comment and then public comment. So I just have a couple of comments. So we're now almost two months into the coronavirus pandemic, as everybody knows. Our lives have significantly changed and will likely never go completely back to the way it was, at least I hope. I hope the one thing we all take away from this experience is increased compassion. I know that I've been doing the best that I can with that and I, and I know everybody else has too. So compassion for your neighbors, your friends, and your family. Let's continue to work together and help each other get through this. Earlier this week, with regard to the coronavirus pandemic, I signed the fourth declaration of emergency, extending the findings another thirty days. extending the findings another 30 days. No changes, just extending it. And it is my hope that we can rescind the order before that time period is up. But everyone needs to continue doing their part to flatten the curve in order for that to happen. So check in on your neighbors, reach out to family members near and far. If you're traveling to the store, see if there's something you can get for a neighbor or a friend to save them a trip. Hopefully with the warm weather coming soon, things will change. Just to remember, just remember to keep each, helping each other. At our meeting on February 27th, and this goes to what you were talking about earlier, trustee Gomez, we approved a proposal to engage Millennium Strategies as grant writers for the village. The board, along with department heads, are now beginning discussions with them on several potential projects in the areas of recruitment and retention of volunteers, land acquisition, and infrastructure projects such as water sewer curbing, along with anything else that we can get help paying for that we need to do. So if one or more of these concepts proves to be beneficial to the village and we can make some headway with that, we'll certainly keep the public updated as to our progress. It is our hope, or my hope certainly, and I'm sure our hope, that Millennium Strategies can help us accomplish our goals and save us money at the same time. That's why we hired them. So that's all I have. So we'll go in the normal order. Trustee Graziano?
All right. Okay, good evening. Thank you all for watching Warm Widows the last three weeks. I think these have gotten a lot smoother as we're doing them. And it's actually been a pretty good meeting. And I think, I think this is going well. And I hope everybody's families are out there doing well. I'd also like to take a moment tonight to pay respects to all those who have actually lost the battle to this horrible virus. It's taken a very bad toll on a lot of families. So I'd like everybody to please keep them in your minds and especially keep them in your hearts. And, you know, try and see what we can do for these people. It's just been a terrible set of tragedies. I'd also like to see, I'm also happy to see the posting out for the comprehensive plan committee. I hope to see a lot of interest in this. This is a chance for our community to have a voice and have a character of Woodbury shaped for the next decade. I look forward to working with our interested residents and local business volunteers to plan the vision for. And I, and I'm finally, as I said repeatedly over the last several weeks, I'd like to once again thank all the frontline workers, first responders out there who are working long hours to put food on our tables, both in the supermarkets and restaurants, care for our sick, provide your utilities and man all the essential businesses that remain open and proudly serving the public. I salute and thank all of you. Have a good night.
Thank you, Chris. Trustee Gomez is next, I believe.
First of all, I'd like to say sorry, coming in a little later, computer is glitchy. I keep losing the screen. Goes to black. I hope you still can see me. Thank you for those that participated. And please be careful if you go out. You know, the people are panicking, the spread of this virus going nuts. So just be patient with everyone, thank those that you can as much as possible. A please and a thank you goes a long way. So bless all and stay safe.
Thank you, Jesus. Trustee Biurk.
So these last two meetings, the board has set forth two core objectives that every one of us has championed in some way, you know, via our campaigns. And, you know, there are the comprehensive plan exploratory committee and now the community preservation plan. What encouraged me to get involved in public office and to run for public office is realizing that there was so much that could be done to preserve the natural beauty of Woodbury when I moved here. And I always wanted to know what, what more could be done. And the more I read, the more intrigued I became. And I was reading about how these communities who adopted these plans were successful in doing just that and preserving them for decade. Warwick's been over a decade. Woodbury has so much left to preserve and it is imperative that we take the necessary steps now. And we have, and I'm proud to be a part of a board that is, is being proactive and taking this seriously. So these two objectives in conjunction with the many zoning changes that we're proposing are just some of the ways in which the board is working for the community. We've heard you and we share in the many concerns of the residents of this beautiful town, and we will work towards making these initiatives become a reality. So thank, thank you everyone for putting your faith again in us and for allowing us this opportunity to make Woodbury stronger and to preserve it. And I wish everyone health, to be safe and be well and healthy through the next several months of this horrible crisis. Thank you.
Thank you, Tara. So Jacomoza?
Well, I, what I was told when I decided to run for election, that the hardest part of being a village trustee was the running part. Well, I'm here to tell you, the hardest part about being a village trustee is being a village trustee. Yes, there are some who run for office who do it for the wrong reasons. They did not run to protect their community, did not run to help their fellow residents, did not run to better our Woodbury. Now, I can't tell you why one runs, but I'm here to tell you, part two, it's not for the preferred parking and it's not for the dental plan, because neither of them exist. I put a great deal of pressure on myself to do the right thing for all residents, to do the best job I can for all, regardless of whether you voted for me or not. Thankfully, I have a great support net, network here. And I'm not talking about my family and friends, but I'm talking about my fellow trustees, I'm talking about our department heads, and I'm talking about our village clerks. I'm very proud of the work we have been able to accomplish over this year and a half. And this year alone, we have rolled out zoning code changes. We have rolled out this, we created this comprehensive plan committee. We began work on protecting our open space, which Tara just talked about. We are working not only on that, but we're also working on protecting our water. We've passed resolutions on bail reform. And I think we have been, we have worked diligently to make the village just more transparent and accessible to the people that make up this wonderful community. All this is made possible by the cooperative effort of all. You can say many hands make light work. Are you alone? Or alone, we can do so little to together we could do so much and many other corny but true sayings. But the reality is nothing could be accomplished for Woodbury, our Woodbury, without the amazing group of people that you, I feel you see on your screen and I'm blessed to work with. So until next time, stay classy, Woodbury, and I'll see you at the next meeting. Oh, and by the way, by the way, because, you know, our tax revenue is low, I've gotten us a sponsor for the meetings. And it's Manischewitz gefilte fish. All right. And what goes better with Manischewitz gefilte fish? A gold horse radish. It's not a party without gold horse radish. Thank you very much.
I don't even know how to respond to that.
I don't know if that was serious or not.
Yes, I contacted Manischewitz in Morocco. And I've gotten them to sponsor our village board meetings.
Kelly, any comments? I'm going to take a drink of my, of my ginger ale.
Yeah, that's what it is.
The recordings are going to be transcribed.
That's good, because I don't know how to spell gefilte fish.
All right. So Desiree, do you have any comments before?
I, I actually, I actually do, yeah. In addition to yesterday being the 50th anniversary of Earth Day, it was also administrative professional day. Usually that means the employees at village hall eat lunch together as a group. Some get flowers or gifts from their department heads to thank them for all that they do for them for the whole year. This year, there was no lunch held and I don't know if anyone got any flowers or gifts because of social distancing and all these schedules that we are working because of the essentials and the declaration declared by the mayor. The support staff, in addition to supporting their department heads, is also the person that most taxpayers speak to on the phone when they call with questions, concerns or issues. So I just want to name them. There's not many, so it'll only take a couple of seconds and just let you know what they do for your government. Sheila, who's been employed for the, with, with Woodbury for over 15 years, is in the highway department. She handles calls about leaf pickup, brush collection, roadsideage and things like that. Jean, who has been employed for 19 years in the water sewer department, mails out all the water bills, answers all the calls about water issues and schedules final meter readings for all house sales. Maria, who's been employed for 21 years, Marion 19 and Jennifer in, for two, in the building department, answer tons of questions about building permits, fences, pools, et cetera. Handles all the municipal searches. Whenever you sell or buy a home, municipal search has to be taken and done. They handle all that. Plus, they work with all the applicants who come before the planning and zoning board because your application has to go to them. And they sit there and they help people with that. Then in my office, besides me, there's Jessica, who's been employed for seven years, and Claudia, who's there less than a year, who answers everything else. So nobody knows where to, where to call. They hit that button and we direct them where to go. So we're like a catchall for anything, everything, including town, county, state, where does someone live? The questions we get are amazing. So I just wanted to take a moment to recognize what I consider to be the backbone of village government, which are the support staff to all of your departments and you guys as well, who most of the time is the person that the public speaks to before they get to a department head or one of you. And that's all.
That's great. Very well said. Thank you. Counsel? Okay.
I'm good.
All right, you're better than good. All right. So let's go out to the public. I will start with Mrs. Capriglione. Do you have anything, Sandy?
No, I'm good.
Okay. Thank you, ma'am. Mrs. Lada?
Yeah, Tim, just two quick things. I think I know the answer to the first one. I just want to be certain. Based on everything I'm hearing, I'm assuming that the appointment of the building inspector is in addition to what is currently on staff and not a replacement for?
Yes, that's correct.
Okay. And the second one is just a question in regards to, I don't know how much longer we're going to be meeting in this fashion. Just a suggestion that maybe you can put the meeting ID and the password for the meeting on the meeting agenda when it goes out? Make it a little bit easier to find.
On the website, Joe.
Is it on the website?
Yeah, if you, if you go to the village board page, that's where it is.
Okay.
Right, it's right at the top there.
Facebook page. It's on, it's on there. It's all.
Yeah, the problem with the Facebook page, always sometimes you have to hunt through numerous posts.
Yeah, but if you go to the website, it's literally right there on the very top of the village board page.
Village board page, okay.
We did it that way because if the planning and zoning board ever jump on, they might have different codes. So we wanted to do it board specific.
Okay, thank you.
But is there any reason why we couldn't put it on a agenda desk? That was the question.
I can, but the agenda's on the same page. So you go to the same page anyway. Because whatever I put on the agenda, Jessica takes the agenda and copies and pastes it to the page. So the first thing you see is the Zoom connection. And underneath that, you see all the, the agenda in its entirety.
I typically go to the documents page.
Okay.
And then to the village board and print out the documents for the meeting. And I don't recall seeing it there.
That's maybe how you do it. I'm sorry, but most, like, most people, like, I'm going on it right now as we're talking. If you go to the, I can share this, right? Just so everybody can see it. Share screen.
Are you sure you share the right?
I'm going to try my best. Okay, you see it? So here's the village. Look at me, look at me CJ, I'm learning how to use Zoom. Here's the village board page and you just go to departments, village board, and this pops up. And there's the directions right there, how to use Zoom. And then right underneath it is the agenda.
All right, yeah, that's typically not the way I go in after the agenda items, but.
Sorry.
You go to documents because then I print the agenda and all related documents for the meeting.
That's right, scroll down.
Okay.
Oh, it said code book.
Yeah, that's our code book. Joe, I would suggest that maybe you maybe start here though, because if there's ever changes to the agenda, it's going to appear here.
Going to be here first?
After, after the other agenda is published, this is where the most up to date information would be.
All right, thank you.
You're welcome.
Do you have anything else?
How do we stop this?
Thank you, Joe.
You can't.
No, seriously.
Here we come.
Click it again.
I, I lost the, oh, wait.
Mr. Conway? Oh, he jumped off.
All right, you're just going to have to see me type my minutes. Sorry. All right, we're done anyway, right?
On this call.
So, excuse me, I'm sorry.
If Jessica was here, she'd know how to unshare that screen.
Oh, where's Tom Flood when you need him?
Okay, so with no further business to discuss, can I have a motion in a second for adjournment, please?
I'll make that motion.
I'll second it.
Trustee Jacomoza, all, any discussion? All in favor? And I vote aye. I just, I just unshared your screen for you.
Oh, thank you. My screen popped up again, so I can see it.
I did that for you.
Recording, could you download it and email it to me so that?
It's going to be quite large. How about I Dropbox it to you or something?
That would be perfect.
Otherwise Jessica will put it on the website tomorrow.
Oh, no, you can, the recording, recording has to be up there, but we can transcribe the first batch for you and then send it to you for review to make sure any words, Manischewitz and other words that we don't know how to spell, you guys can correct.
It'll, it'll take a few minutes. You'll have that in a little bit.
Tomorrow's fine.
Here now. All right. Thank you, everybody. So have a good evening. We're done.
You too.
And safe.